This conference will now be recorded.
I see that.
Oh, he's in the room.
Have you got an extra water by any chance?
You're allowed to hear you. Why don't you let everybody know that we'll have a chance for people to speak if they want to testify, there'll be a portion during the meeting. And we'll be able to turn them on and give them kind of heads up to keep their mics off.
Yeah, just to head. If you're not part of the process here, some of the city people, keep your mics off. There'll be a time that you're allowed to testify. If if that's what you want to do, and there'll be a process for that. I see Steve. Rip a toe. I'm probably not saying that correctly, but I know Steve.
Yes, correct.
Is filled out and he wants to testify. Well, he's on our list.
All right, I'll turn it off.
Hey, but anybody that wants to testify, we want to hear what you have to say. We're still a couple minutes from starting. Yeah, well. Or at least watching. That Steve fellow, he's he's online. Hope I see him. As far as commissioners, so I see.
I see.
I see Ellen. Ellen.
So we have it under owner, but I think behind that non video is Sharon Schaub. I'm sorry, maybe Sharon Corning and. Oh, there we go. And Mary. There they are. You don't have to, by the way, leave your video on. It's not required. For us to know when you're speaking.
We've been tested.
After the model, when it opened, it wasn't quite functioning.
Well, they can't see any of that.
I know you can.
We're going to go ahead and start it. It's. It's seven o'clock. My name is Charlie Piper and I'm the. Chairman of the planning commission for the city of Woodburn. The first thing is everyone bear with me. This is a bit strange. We will get everybody involved that wants to be involved and hopefully we'll get everything done. McKenzie's here to keep them in trouble, which is all good. So. I think we'll. Dispense with the flag flute and do a roll call.
Chair Piper.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Bando.
I'm here.
And I have an, I received an email excusing Commissioner Guerra. Commissioner Corning.
Here.
I have an, or else you received an email, I think you all did as well, saying that Commissioner Dos Rios could not make it tonight. Commissioner Lassen. And I haven't heard from him yet. And Commissioner Berlin.
Here. Oh, there he is.
I think Mr. Lassen just just came on. So we're. We are good. Quorum. Okay, the next thing is commissioners in your packet, you have the minutes for our April 12th and April 23rd. Any additions or corrections to either one of those? Set a minute. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion both of those meetings. The minutes from both.
Okay. We have a.
I can't vote. Charlie, I can't vote on the March 12th one. I wasn't here other than that again.
Okay, we're gonna let you vote on both of them though, because otherwise we might get in trouble on a quorum. So anyway, all those in favor of the minutes as presented signify by saying aye.
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 They are approved. The next thing on our agenda is business from our audience. This is business that is not otherwise on our agenda. And in this case, that would be anything other than what is. Called Allison Way, the apartments on Allison Way. So is there anyone who wishes to speak to other? Things to the. Okay, hearing none. Are there any communications? Finding Commission.
The only one I have is in was submitted into the record regarding the item that you have tonight.
Okay. And with that, we will, I will open the public hearing. For the consolidated land use application for the Allison Way apartments. First thing is to ask for, are there any mixed party contacts or conflicts of interest? Site visit from the commission.
I throw through again, that's all.
Challenge to the commission. Hearing none. We will proceed to the public hearing statement.
Both Oregon law and the Woodburn development ordinance govern evidentiary constitutional land use hearing and require that at the commencement of the hearing, this statement be read to all persons in attendance. The applicable substantive criteria for this land use decision are listed in the staff report and are as follows. Woodburn Development Ordinance Sections 2.03, 2.05, 2.06, 3.01 through 3.07, 4.01, 0.07, 5.01, 0.08, 5.03, 0.02, and 5.03, 1.12. The hearing will proceed in the following general order: staff report, applicant's presentation, testimony in favor of the application, testimony in opposition to the application, rebuttal, closure of the record, deliberation and decision. All testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria just stated or other criteria in a plan or land use regulation that the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issue relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Any party wanting a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request while the record is open. Chair Piper.
Thank you. For those of you who are not familiar with how this process works. The next order is a report by staff. After that will be testimony by the applicant, followed by testimony by proponents, those people who are in favor of the application. Then there will be testimony by opponents, those who are against it. Rebuttal by the applicant, and then the public hearing will be closed. The commission will deliberate and make a decision. So at this point, we will turn it over to Colin. With Woodburn Economic Development.
Thank you. This is Colin Cortez, Senior Planner with the City of Woodburn, speaking. In his terms of staff, I'm joined by Chris Kerr, the Community Development Director. McKenzie Granon, the Assistant City Attorney, and also on the video conferences Eric, our Public Works Director, Dogger, City Engineer, and Chuck, who is a consultant that the city hired to help review. The transportation effects of these projects, among others. Going into the presentation. About Allison Way Apartments specifically, the issue before the commission is. Action on a consolidated package of land use application types. Essentially, it's a design review or site plan review for an apartment complex with a number of variance requests included. There's also a request to acknowledge that the project is two phases, a phasing plan. Request to adjust property lines, property line adjustment to eliminate a property line to consolidate two lots. And then something called a street exception, which is to approve a custom cross section for Stacy Allison Way, different than what's standard in the development ordinance. Executive summary in text form, we're talking about 586 apartments. It is the largest apartment complex ever proposed in the city. It's 23. Site is close to I-5. As I mentioned, there's two phases. The first phase is a chunk of land north of Hooper Street. 179 apartments and seven buildings. The remainder are to the south of Hooper Street. The whole project has many onsite and public improvements. There's two rec buildings, a bunch of quarters with landscaping and a public plaza. You'll see some images in a few minutes. The estimated build out is to the year 2024. And among the six variance requests, there's one for the amount of parking. The request by the applicant is to have 1.75 stalls per apartment typical. And then, as I mentioned, there's a street exception for custom cross section for Stacy Allison Way. So where is the site? So this is vicinity map, black and white showing the basic street and tax lot structure of the city. Green are parks. I'll use the cursor, yes. That little spot marooned is City Hall. This is Settle Meyer Park, and the closest park to the site over here is. Centennial Park. And over here outlined in yellow, you can see the site. Here's an image of an active zoning map with an aerial on the right. So you can see the site is owned, general commercial CG. And the property is undeveloped fields. You can see on the right, there are no trees or any sort of buildings remaining. You might remember as a commission from about a year ago, that apartments were allowed in CG by right, and the council chose to change this upon the commission's recommendation. And so this slide of three bullets summarizes what's in the staff report. Essentially, the application was made at the time that apartments were allowed by right in this district. And so based on what some planners call the goalpost rule per state law. To treat the application fairly, we're applying the rules and regulations that existed at the time that the application was made. And because the code at the time allowed apartments in CG, that's why the proposal is moving forward for review. Going back to the site, the larger aerial view of the property, it's three lots. This lot up here is all of Phase One. These two lots down here are Phase Two and are lots that would be consolidated into one. You might know Stacy Allison Way comes to an end here. This is where the pavement ends today. The remainder of the right of way exists. It's what some people call a paper street. There's no improvements yet. So Stacy Allison would be extended by the developer to the edge of the project in the way down here. To the right, some context over here are Cascade Meadow Apartments. And to southeast, you can see a Paradise Point subdivision. More about the conditions out there. These are some ground level views. On the left, you can see the barricades for Stacy Allison dead ends. On the right is north from Hooper to along Stacy Allison Way. It's a three lane road. There's a continuous center left turn lane and a lane in each direction and two bike lanes with a curb tight sidewalk. From these photos in particular, you can see how close the project is to I-5. On the left, you can see a semi, and on the right, you can see some wayfinding signage on the interstate. There's also along the length of much of Allison, a regional stormwater facility, a large swale, which would be extended by the developer along with the street. There's some fencing along it now and quite a bit of vegetation. There is this that lies between Stacy Allison and I-5. That's a basic view looking east from the dead end of Stacy Allison along Hooper. You can see the fields. And now to the development itself, what does it look like? So this is an artist rendering from the developer of the project, flying, looking towards the northwest. You can get a basic 3D sense of the area of structures and parking on the site. Moving along, this is the two dimensional view, black and white night plan. But wait a moment and voila, colors will help immensely. So let me take you as a tour guide through the project a little bit. So as I mentioned, Phase One is up here. The yellowish color represents the apartment buildings. And you'll notice that part of the design is what I call courtyards. So three buildings framing an open space that's for resident use, the common area on the site. There's one, two, three, four, five of these across the project. You'll notice also that there are parking courts. So there are areas of parking extending out from the main drive aisle. The drive aisle does provide loop circulation. There's a clubhouse for each phase. It's a recreation building in yellow. One and Phase Two. Phase One also has a public plaza that the developers providing along Hooper Street. The two red items represent barbecue shelters. These blue areas represent the trash and recycling enclosures. And then you can see based on the green over here where the remainder of the other common areas are. And then you can see the largest areas of landscaping within parking area in this green over here. And then the dark gray represents the area of Stacy Allison Way for which right of way exists, but the street doesn't exist yet. That's in Phase Two. Phase One includes some changes to all of Hooper Street, essentially to reconfigure it a little to remove the bicycle lanes and make it more like a local street as called for in the development ordinance. And to provide additional landscape. Phase One includes some alterations to Stacy Allison Way as it exists today. So overall, it's been about a year and staff has been working with the applicant quite a bit to provide a number of amenities for the project, both. In public areas and on the site. There's lots of bicycle parking. There's going to be electric vehicle charging stalls with station. There's a drive aisle speed table, the children's play area that play area is in yellow in Phase Two here, and this would be the race speed table, the drive aisle. Providing some framing for Hooper Street. So they'll be lending some life to the street because of the residence will be close to it. The buildings are also set back from Allison Way because it is next to a freeway, and so staff was concerned about providing some better visual and acoustic buffering of resonance. There is easy to understand site wide loop circulation, both for emergency vehicles and other vehicles like trash pickup, mail and residents. There's quite a number of several common area benches. The common areas that I mentioned, the courtyards and the public plaza. And this is an example colorized of what one of those courtyards would look like. Decorative paving, lots of trees and at least a bench. This is a close up of that plaza in Phase One along Hooper. The colors provide some context so that yellow is the clubhouse in Phase One. This green to the southwest is landscaping and Hooper Street. And you can see a plaza that provides the sort of thing you might expect seating landscaping. Recreational area. This is an example of Phase One of what the typical apartment building would look like in terms of color. There are typical apartment buildings, three story walk ups. Outdoor stairwells. And Phase Two has a slightly different shape and color scheme. So on to process. So as you might remember from the projects, there's a document called analysis and findings. That's how staff looked at the project compared to various codes and ordinances and made determination about how it did or didn't meet them. And their conditions of approval were appropriate. The property line adjustment, as I mentioned, is consolidating the two southern lots by removing this existing block on. The desire review is pretty straightforward, which is why there's no slide about it. It's basically the review of the site plan. It meets it with a couple of conditions in this staff report. And the phasing plan is also recorded. It's approved acknowledging the phasing as the developer proposes. So now more into the variances and the street exception. This is a variance list summarizing what's in the staff report. There are six of them listed in order of code. Description is the same as in the staff report. I'm going to take a few minutes focused on the one that staff believes would be of most interest to the commission, and that's number two, parking ratio minimum, meaning how much parking is the developer had to provide on site. The standard installs for dwelling, and the request is to have in the range of 1.75 to 1.77, depending on how the math is done. So summary of the analysis and findings for this one in particular, the applicant provided arguments and support. They were quoted in the analysis and findings, pages 54 and 55, if you want to look back at them while I'm speaking. Staff recommended denial for this particular variance for the reasons that are summarized below from the report. The two criteria for variance weren't met based on a number of factors, including that the site is large, the site is free of physical obstacles. The project could choose to omit buildings and continue to meet or exceed the minimum net density required for that area. If there was a parking variance granted, private parking could overflow into public streets. And then lastly, there's an existing phenomenon near the site. The parking management of Cascade Meadow Apartments by that property manager has caused a problem on public streets that this project could exacerbate. Moving on to the street exception. This is, and there'll be text and images to make it all clear. We'll start with text. This is a breakdown of basically three segments of street that the exception covers. The first is Hooper Street. That one's pretty straightforward. It's an upgrade and a light customization of a local cross section, and the condition accepts it mostly as proposed. More attention is to Stacy Allison Way, 2A covers existing segment and 2B covers what's to be built as an extension. For 2A. As conditioned, it would essentially counter the applicant's proposal, which was to keep the substandard improvements, to do some upgrades for the chief purpose of having a planter of street trees. Which would mean relocating the sidewalk. For 2B, the extension countering the applicant's proposal to extend the substandard improvements, the condition requires building that new extension so that there is a planter strip of street trees in a sidewalk. And also to specify then on the west side where that stormwater swale is, instead of trees, per public works request, there'll be shrubbery instead, some kind of landscaping. So this is the base comparison. This image comes from the development ordinance. Stacy Allison Way is what's called the service collector class of street. As built today, Stacy Allison Way is a little odd because it's asymmetrical. As I mentioned, on one side, there is I-5 in that facility. And so the improvements are asymmetric relative to where the right of way is. So this is an image on the left of how it's built today, and on the right, don't try and read it. There's a larger version coming up. It is the applicant's cross section. So if you were to try and slice the street in half, side to side, this is a schematic representing what it would look like. This is another photo on the left taken yesterday, showing the latest conditions out there. Again, curb tight sidewalk. So this is the fuller size cross section the applicant provided with some notes by staff at the bottom. The gist of the slide is that the condition is. Countering with the applicant proposed so that there'll be a planter street trees. There'll be a median in some place, and I'll talk about that more in detail in a minute. And on the left, instead of the tree proposed, as you can see in the diagram, there'll be shrubbery instead. So what this image tries to get across on the left, the site plan, is where two cross sections of Stacy Allison Way would be. One is yellow, and on the type right, you can see my hand drawing of that cross section. Essentially, it's two travel lanes, continuous center left turn lane, bike lanes on the left shrubbery. And on the right, the east side, there'd be a planter strip with street trees and a sidewalk. In roughly the middle of Stacy Allison, within where it would be extended in this green representation, if you look at the cross section bottom right here. You can see the chief difference is there'd be a median instead of a turn lane. The reason being, if you look at the site plan over here, between Hooper Street here to the north and to the first driveway here is about 800 feet. So because there's no driveways on the east side in this 800 feet, and on the left, it's a swell in the freeway, there's nowhere to turn to from anywhere. So there's no need for a turn lane there. And so the condition is set up so that a median would taper into existence here, accommodating any traffic turning left from Hooper South into Allison. And then as this, as drivers would approach this driveway here, the median would taper out of existence and the turn lane would taper into existence. And this slide is essentially the same information, just in case it's easier to see on your computer screens, it's reverse figure ground for these cross sections in case you can see light on black better. So a little bit more about the median. This is a site plan view of where the median would go approximately. On the left is the basic site plan, and on the right is median. We blow up the images a little more. And provide some photos for context. On the left, you can see left existing Stacy Allison Way, which is what the applicant wanted to extend. And on the right, you see an example photo what a median could be landscaped. And then you see a conceptual idea of how the median would actually extend with trees. There would be a central gap as puppet works requested, and then the median tapers out of existence approaching the driveways and the south boundary of the project to allow a continuous left turn lane. And then this is a comparison of the slide you saw earlier, so you can see both plan views and the cross sections at once. And moving on, we'll delve into the transportation conditions in particular, primarily so I can orient you to where these conditions are talking about in space. I'll cover the automotive series ones first because they're pretty straightforward. There's three intersections near Highway 214. These are the ones that the project most affects in terms of chip generation and traffic. And so the conditions basically obtain money from the developers so we can, as a city, do a transportation study. And figure out what specific improvement is best for each of these three intersections. And could include some sort of capital improvement project, include changing signal timing where traffic signals exist. Adding traffic signals when none exist, that sort of thing. Moving on to the transportation bike pet and transit series, these do a number of things. They collect funds or they require improvements for walking, cycling, van pooling and regional and local transit. Including to fill sidewalk gaps, a few exist in this region, and to improve safety in American with Disabilities Act accessibility. The basic objective underlying all these is to encourage traveling these ways more often by residents as opposed to driving. So starting at the north. Each of these codes indicates the condition. The yellow trapezoids indicate curb ramps where they don't exist to provide ADA accessibility. The dash lines indicate new sidewalks. You'll see one, two, three segments here. Right now, an evergreen road on two sides between where Allison Way begins and West Hay Street. There's not full sidewalk. There are gaps. And then on West Hay Street, west of Evergreen on the north side, there's also a gap. So these conditions get at upgrading ADA accessibility and plugging three sidewalk gaps. As we move farther south towards the project along Evergreen, we'll see another sidewalk gap that's being filled in. Two ramp upgrades and then plugging a small gap between where sidewalk exists and this driveway to Walmart. And then down here adding a curb ramp where none exists at this intersection. Moving on to the last of the bike ped conditions, there's one for Evergreen Path. You might remember this context from the Smith Creek Development Project. There's an unimproved right of way between Woodburn Senior Estates here. And the Montebello subdivisions to the west. One time planned to be evergreen, but evergreen ended up being built farther to the west. There is a project in the transportation system plan to have a bike pit trail through this corridor. And you might remember the approved Smith Creek Development is dedicating a track that leads up from the extension of Ben Brown Lane up to the boundary of this right of way. What the context of this map is showing is the project in yellow and presently based on the where streets are, if you were driving, you'd have to follow the orange line to sort of detour northeast and then east and then back south and Settle Meyer and west and far to get to say Settle Meyer, or I'm sorry, Centennial Park, which will probably be a major attraction along with Settle Meyer Park in terms of parks. So as part of Smith builds out, one way to try and entice people to walk and cycle to destinations like these more than driving is to have a shortcut. And the way to do that is to have that bike pit path that Smith Creek is building extend just a little bit and connect to Baylor Drive. Because as we'll see in a minute, this segment of walkway from the unimproved right of way to Baylor already exists. This is a close up of where the path would go approximately. Down here is where Smith Creek is, the development. And so the path would follow, pick up from there and continue about 350 feet. Come here and join this existing path to get to Baylor Street over here. On the right, you can see where the Smith Creek path is going to be. On the right, you can see where the Smith Creek path is going to be. On the right is a picture of that very path and Montebello subdivision number two improved. It's there. It's public. It's an easement ready and waiting. So the context is that people would come from Smith Creek, pardon me, on the Mill Creek Greenway Trail. Come up here another three hundred fifty feet, take the shortcut walkway and be able to take the existing street system to get to and from the project. I'll wrap up the conditions approval overall. There's a number of topics that cover. Big picture versus encouraging walking and cycling, a number of ways to do that. Wide sidewalk and Stacy Allison Way custom street section is one. Lots of bicycle parking on the site. The bike ped transportation conditions I talked about to fill sidewalk gaps, improve ADA accessibility. And the path extension. There's also the EV stalls I mentioned on the site. There is a condition that also requires the property manager of Allison Way Apartments to survey how parking is actually used on the site. To help us collect data and understand how developments like this actually use parking. So we can apply that knowledge to future developments. Encouraging transit ridership. Among the funds we're collecting is to improve the three intersections I mentioned. And also to extend regional and local bus service and by regional, I mean buses that get commuters to and from Salem metro area and Portland metro area. As well as installing two bus shelters. There'll also be funds to encourage carpooling or rather vam pooling to be more specific, residence. And to acknowledge two phases and the timing. So I'll pause and see because it is a lot of information. If there are any immediate questions by anyone. And I'll move to the zoom so I can see people and see if there are any questions by the commission.
Think you answered mine.
I look to Chair Piper.
What is the Meridian? Planted area on Allison Way. The Meridian planted area on or the median planted area on Allison Way. What is the purpose of that?
Oh, I'm glad you mentioned that because I almost forgot to mention that Eric would like to comment on that.
Well, I thought I saw a comment that he didn't necessarily like.
That's the very thing. So there was staff disagreement on the idea. So the condition is proposed does have a median. And to answer your question more directly of why it was proposed by planning. It was to provide better acoustic and visual buffering of the project from I five. The way you can think of it is there are four general corridors where you could place landscaping as a buffer. On the freeway, there's that little strip of area that's between the curb and the fencing for the stormwater swale on the west side of Stacy Allison Way. That issue is already put to bed. There'll be shrubbery there. Another way is to have a median in Stacy Allison Way. That'd be the second corridor. A third would be a planner strip on the east side of Stacy Allison Way. And the fourth and final location would be on the private property, basically the perimeter of the yard of the property. And the way the condition is worded now, the median for where would exist on Stacy Allison Way would be the first landscape buffer that has trees. If you proceed from West Estates.
Eric, do you have a comment about that?
I just want to mention this planning commission and chair. That it's mostly primarily maintenance driven. It's not really, it's not in our WDO. It's not really the. Place as the service collector for this type of application. This is maybe more in either. A larger highway design or sometimes in a small residential that. That's mostly because of that. And then the maintenance for our staff that's already taxed because of the I five improvements. And then the third thing, and I don't know technical data on that, but you have more items to run into as traveling vehicles. And so it could be some safety implications there as well.
Thank you. Evergreen path into Montebello.
Chair Piper, I think.
Jump on somebody?
No, Mary Berlin is trying to speak. He seems.
Mary, Mary, you're.
Can I ask something?
We can hear you now.
Yeah, Ellen, go ahead while we're seeing.
Yeah, no, I was just telling. Saying that we couldn't hear. Still not.
No.
Oh.
I see your lips moving, but.
Chair Piper, if I suggested.
Yes, question. Mary.
Who just asked that?
That was Mary. I think there was delayed audio, but that was definitely her.
Oh, okay. We're still.
Um. This architectural wall number six. Can you hear?
Here, Piper, I suggest since the audio is bad. I believe meeting has a chat function.
Can you hear now? It's better. Well, I don't know what to do.
He can hear you.
Oh, okay. Um, the architect. You can.
We're kind of hearing, but there's a delay. It looks like.
Can you hear me now?
Wonder about that.
Yeah, how do you know? Lips are.
There's some kind of a delay. There's a problem there. Can you?
Now, can you hear?
Can you call in via phone?
We can't hear. I did. Okay, so the architectural wall is what I'm questioning. Why do they? Why get on it?
Okay, we cut architectural wall. Chris is still working on stuff, but we'll go to Colin on the answering the question about the architectural wall.
Okay, I understand. Yes. I understand the question is, why recommend approval for the versions? So the reason it's recommended for approval with a condition. Accommodation of a landscape buffer. Would be ideal instead of a wall.
The architectural wall, why is there, why? You know.
This doesn't.
Standby, Mary. We're still got challenges.
Who's number? What? I'm sorry. But it is called Chris.
Standby everybody. We've got some technical things going on here. We'll try to get more.
Actually, I don't understand. No, no. You know, actually, I don't understand why if all six of these are on here, if we have codes and ordinances and and ways to do it, why accept it? Okay. Okay.
Let's try this. Let's come back to Mary. And in the meantime. Walk, walk through that evergreen path in a month thing again, real quick.
All right, I'll go back to the slide presentation for the evergreen path.
We'll come back to you, Mary. Don't worry.
Is there some word of it specifically or interesting?
So. So the orange dotted line there to the middle. The bike path.
Um, this orange line is a street route.
No, the dotted line.
The dash one, this represents Smith Creek Phase one A extension of Ben Brown Lane up to Harvard. And then in phase, the next phase in the project, there'd be the street called Kirksey that would connect Ben Brown to Par.
Well. If you can. If you can walk down the street out of Montebello and pick up the extension onto Ben Brown Lane. Why do you need the piece that goes in that? Dedicated easement and access is in that Montebello piece. Do you follow me?
Yeah, I'll focus on the green line to help answer the question. So the green line represents the Mill Creek Greenway Trail that'll be extended from Settle Meyer Park. Your Phase one A of Smith.
Yeah.
And also in Phase one B of Smith. And in later phases, it goes from here northerly to this portion. So there'll be a complete route from Settle Meyer Park up to this point. This little stub will come in with one ape. It will be just that a stub. Basically, what the project does is provide a planned route that's improved up to this point, but at that point it's a dead end. So people would have to get off the trail at Ben Brown. There'd be this little stop here between the orange staff. And between the states in Montebello. So the idea is people could continue along in the little ways and get to a street instead of having a dead end path.
But all that's going to do is take them down that little path and then back onto surface streets. So what's the difference between a surface street in Montebello and Ben Brown Lane?
Provides people opportunity to avoid some of the more highly trafficked. Built out Harvard and Ben Brown would be easier and carry more traffic than the local streets.
Thank you. Mary, are you back yet? Where are we at with that?
Hey commissioners, this is Associate Planner Handle.
Yes.
I just sent. I just sent a message via the chat. If you could call in on your phone, like a cell phone or something, it may help you get clearer audio. Chris, Director Kerr also just sent you both an email with the phone number.
Okay.
Essentially, it's, it sounds as though there's an audio issue. It could be an internet connection issue on your side that's putting some lag on your audio. From your internet.
Sounding okay now. Okay, let me see this number.
If you don't mind giving it.
Yeah.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign.
What is that?
It's the code. I can read it till you feel like it.
Enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign.
Do you have that?
Yeah. Yeah. Are you ready for?
Four, four, nine, eight, seven, two.
I'm sorry, Sadie.
Four, four, nine. Eight, seven, two, zero, six, one. Better hope she doesn't need a pen.
I need the access code again.
Certainly. Four, four, nine.
Oh.
Eight, seven, two. Zero, six, one.
Four, nine.
Eight, seven, two.
Seven, two.
Zero, six, one.
Zero, what? Six, one. Okay, all right.
It's on your chat screen on your video as well. Click on that button.
Okay, and the four, four, nine? I'm gonna shoot my.
Can you see it on my picture?
Chat screen on there?
I have no idea. I don't even know what it is.
No. Okay. Oh, I see. It's right on here. Oh. Okay.
Then you're going to want to mute your. Once that comes through, you're going to want to.
This conference will now be recorded.
Can you hear us now? And but you're off the phone. You're not on your phone. We're not, we're not, we're still not getting anything from you.
We cannot hear the access code was not correct.
That's what was on the.
Number are twelve people.
Can we just walk over there and?
How about, how about this? Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a twelve person limit. Six people in here. So you two could come in. Okay. That's what we're going to do. We are in recess for five minutes till our rest of our commissioners can get here and get online with us. Thank you all.
We're coming over.
Oh, um, it's on my car.
I'll drive.
Or some combination of both. Can you grab one of these front desks? I don't think we're going to have that many people.
Yeah, I might go, but instead of the front left one.
Yeah.
Okay. Pretty shocked with that access code. Just say. Just say.
Is it possible to test some of the other connections of people? Is it possible to do a quick test of everybody that's kind of online? Sure. Was that Chris that was asking that? No, that was the architect, Robert Leib, just to, just to have everybody kind of see if we don't have that same problem. Okay. Let's talk to Commissioner Alson. Oh, Dan's got to unmike him? Okay. I, I think our, our techie has stepped away from his desk as well. Be patient with this, everyone.
This is Chris, I got a comment.
Go ahead, Chris.
I think what's happening is that the same thing is happening during this week, uh, you can zoom. Um, I haven't been able to meet you except here.
His voice is pretty garbled as well coming through here. You in this?
Chair Piper, this is Associate Planner Handle. Uh, I understand you're hoping to do a mic check?
Yes.
Uh, Roger, we hear you. It is a bit loud on your end. Uh, I'm not sure if you've got a train going by or something.
Yeah, Coast Guard helicopter, but I'm gonna put on the earphones, so that should be better.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, let's see. Doug Green, Mr. Green, I don't know if you care to.
I'm testing one, two, three, hear me?
Yes, sir, we can. Alright. And then we've got some members of the public. Uh, I suppose if you'd like to do a little mic check as well, why don't we start with Mr. Rippenow, Ripetow?
Hello.
Unmute, there. Now, can you hear me?
Alright, yes, sir, we can.
Okay, it's coming in loud and clear, huh?
We're doing, yep.
Alright, I'll un, I'll mute it.
Alright. And forgive me, who, who else is part of the applicants team on here? Uh, feel free to chime in with your mic.
Can you hear me?
We can hear.
I'm with Lancaster and Mobley.
Uh, this is Doug Hamilton with Leib.
Oh, thanks, Doug.
This is Aaron West with Shapiro Didway, we're the landscape architects on the team.
Thank you. And then the last person I see on the list here is Johanna Venegas. Uh, is that someone associated with the team?
Uh, I'm just a person.
Well, we hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Okay.
Alright Chair, that's everybody.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, I think we'll, we'll go back into session here. Ellen and Sharon, or Sharon, yeah, everybody's here. That's gonna be, uh, Mary, you had a question?
Commissioners, can you please speak into the microphone?
Hello? To hold it? Okay, so I don't know why any of these six are on the requested variance paper because if they're part of the WBO or part of the ordinances or whatever else legal is part of, you know, getting permission to build, why should anybody get a variance for it? Obviously, they're there for a reason. And especially an architectural wall and, you know, trees or bushes don't do the same thing.
What are the conditions that make? Viable, is that what you said?
We're having issues hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't hear.
Yeah, it sounds like everybody's underwater and I only catch a bit of every third or fourth word.
I'm on it, and I'll start over again. So looking at the list on the screen, I'll go in order to help answer Commissioner Brillan's question. So the first variance of the six is the driveway minimum width. So a difference of four feet to 20 from 24 typical, except where fire access is required. Some of the drive aisles are proposed at 26 feet. Does allow slightly more room site wide for more other parking, landscaping, buildings, that sort of stuff. And because it doesn't really affect the off the property, there seemed to be no harm from a foul, so staff was inclined to acknowledge and approve it that way, setting explicitly with the minimum would be. And acknowledging that fire access is definitely still maintained. Uh, number two, that's someone we're recommending denial for, so we'll skip it. Number three, compact parking. A number of reasons. Uh, first, because there's precedent. A similar request was approved for valley apartments. Uh, also, there's no effect in terms of size of stalls. Anything outside the project. It's just the size of the stalls are different, but it doesn't affect the count. Um, and again, some of which is, if they're slightly smaller, that leaves more improvements on site. Uh, number four, the drive aisle minimum width, it's for the same reasons as for driveway and compact parking. Number five, the curb height. Uh, makes sense, the applicant's reasoning being that, um, for some vehicles, if you attempt to overhang a curb, you'll scrape the undercarriage. I know this through the experience. And so the request to have a curb of inches doesn't prevent the curb from still holding in landscaping, directing stormwater, doesn't affect other properties. And then the last one, as I mentioned before, it seemed reasonable to staff to have a different kind of buffer instead of a wall, so a lot of greenery. And where parking on the site would be closest to the boundary to have a wood fence instead of a wall.
If I may time in on that question, the to use greenery as a buffer really doesn't take care of sound issues at all. I mean, and actually, I don't see that it does anything more than obscure sight.
Um, if I may suggest, perhaps it'd be better to have a discussion about whether the commission's inclined to not go with the recommendation and perhaps deny variance. That is an option. I, I'm just not sure I can offer more than what I've already explained for the variances overall.
And, and I think it's important to remember that variances are the request of the builder, of the, the builder and the property owner, that they feel that their development uh, is experiencing a hardship or would be a better development with these changes. Uh, possibly, but all that goes to the business model. If that's the case, that goes to the business model to make the the development profitable. It, it, to me, to me, it's, it's kind of like saying, we can now allow restaurants to seat 50%, to, to open up, but they can only seat 50% capacity. The problem I have with that is most restaurants require probably 80, 90% capacity to be profitable. And we don't know the developer's business model and how that goes together. So those are his, and, and maybe the questions would be better asked of him. So at this point, do we have, because we're not in arbitration, or not arbitration, but discussion of it, are there any more questions of Colin before we go to testimony by the applicant? Go.
Uh, Commissioners, please remember to speak into the microphones, please. Thank you.
Just the substandard label tells me that something is not up to par. Or does it have a different connotation, um, in your world?
So I'll recap. What I was trying to get across is there's an existing Stacy Allison way that was built so long ago, it doesn't meet the standards for today. One way has a curbed tight sidewalk. For that class of street, there should be a planter strip in the sidewalk. Um, the applicant's request was to keep it, so to essentially deviate from the standards we have today. And then in response, staff crafted a condition that upgrades it so it's in closer conformance with the standards we have today, including to have a planter strip. That's correct. So staff's condition counters the applicant's proposal.
Okay, now we have testimony by the applicant. Please give your name and address for the record.
If it's not orange, yeah. You could also just turn it on by turning up the bass, so.
Is that better? Okay. Um, good evening. My name is Eugene Labunsky. I'm the owner developer. Address is 25030 Southwest Parkway Avenue, Wilsonville, Oregon, 97070. Um, I first would like to thank the staff for their assistance, Colin and Chris and Dan and who have very helpful for us throughout this process. Uh, we've been working on this for about two years, all in, the application went in about a year ago. And we listened to the concerns of the city, concerns of engineering, and also looking at the community and the needs. We attended the city housing needs meeting that was held about eight months ago, is that correct, Colin? Give or take. Also, I grew up in the city of Woodburn, so I take great pride in what we do here. Uh, own a lot of property in the city and looking to improve it. So we looked at the Stacy Allison's site a while back. Uh, the site has been sitting vacant for the last 18 years. It was originally commercially zoned, however, retail stores, as we all know it, are far in between and most of them are closing these days and that's sitting vacant. So I looked at that site and thought would be the best use for the site. Uh, the city, we did, first of all, we did economic study with Johnson Economics and it showed that there was a need of 1,500 units into the city of Woodburn in the next 10 years. Uh, the housing analysis that we attended, that the city of Woodburn completed, showed that there was a need for 1,000 units in the next 10 years, give or take, I believe. When we attended that. So we went ahead and designed a project. Uh, we tweaked it quite a bit throughout the project with Colin's help and Chris's help to kind of meet, make it, give it that courtyard feel. We understand that this project will be the first project that you will see driving northbound on I-5. We feel like it's a prime location for the city to have that kind of housing because it's kind of out of sight, out of mind. It's close access to I-5 in and out. It'll bring a lot of professionals from Portland and also Salem due to the affordability of housing. And also give commerce a, a big boost in business here locally. Uh, we took a lot of things into consideration. Speaking of the architectural wall, uh, we, we developed a lot of apartments throughout the Portland area, uh, also Salem area. And walls tend to actually create, create a sound barrier when they're, when they're of significant height. This wall would only be a six foot height wall that would be required today. So there's already a wall between the apartment complex that's to the south of us. I believe the name of that one is, uh.
Uh, if I may take a moment, it's Cascade Menos.
Cascade Menos, correct.
And the variance applies farther south, south of Cooper Street.
Correct.
Between the project and, um, Paradise Point subdivision.
So we chose the, we hired a landscape architect, we chose the landscaping route, uh, because typically our neighbors like to see more green barriers. They typically, they grow better, we maintain them on our site, they create a nice visual point between the two property lines. Walls create more of a institutional type feel. We've gotten a lot of kickback on that. We've, we've done walls before and then taken them down, uh, just because they don't work that well and people like to see a nice green shrub. It creates a better noise barrier in a sense. So that's why we chose that route. Um, and looking at the wall that's on the south, north side, it's falling, crumbling down, uh, it's not looking good and they typically don't get maintained like they should where landscaping can get maintained with apartment complexes. So with that said, I hope that addresses the architectural wall condition. Going further in regards to parking, we've hired two or three, uh, different professionals to look at the parking situation. Woodburn has pretty strong parking code. It's a lot larger requirement than most cities have. I have a little chart here that I brought. For instance, Cambie has a requirement for one parking stall for a studio. Woodburn has two. Uh, one bedroom, Cambie has one, uh, parking stall, uh, and Woodburn has two. And going on, same thing with jurisdictions like Kaiser, Lake Oswego, Mountain Angel, they'll have lesser requirements. Our parking ratio is 1.77. We feel like that's a over the amount of parking that, that other jurisdictions have. Woodburn has a lot higher parking. We respect that, so we, we almost were able to meet that. Typically, an apartment complex this size will have vacancies around 5% vacancy. We also enforce our parking policy very strongly. Uh, if you have a two bedroom apartment, for instance, you can only have two cars. If you have a one bedroom apartment, you can only have, uh, one car. They also have guest parking plus the factor of the vacancy ratio in the complex. So if there's vehicles that are parked that, that don't have a permit to park in the complex, they will be towed. Uh, we do that to enhance our communities and make sure that every tenant has a parking spot. And also the neighbors don't have a parking issue. Uh, so that's where we go from parking. I'll, I'll welcome any questions on that. I also I know there's no parking, well, there is parking right now on Stacy Allison. Engineering didn't want to allow parking on Stacy Allison. Stacy Allison is a very wide receptor. It's about 40 feet wide with a center turn lane. Uh, we feel that yes, Stacy Allison will be extended in the future to more of an industrial, uh, area. I believe the zoning will be industrial once it's annexed in. However, that width of a street in other jurisdictions, typically you see streets that are 35 feet wide and they're still parking allowed on either one side or the other side. We feel that allowing parking on Stacy Allison for overflow will be beneficial to the community and still allow for even trucks the size of semi trucks to be able to go both ways. And the fact that there's a center lane, there should be sufficient space to park on Stacy Allison if overflow is needed. Uh, we're recommend, we're proposing to install an eight foot sidewalk, uh, remove the current set, six foot sidewalk says there, is that correct?
I believe that's the width.
Yeah, so currently there's a six foot sidewalk. We feel like putting a wider sidewalk in is a better option than having a bike lane. Uh, for instance, today I was, I went to the site before I came to the meeting. I saw two or three bicycles was on, in the vicinity. Uh, there's bike lanes on both sides and all three bicyclists were on the sidewalk. So typically people go on the sidewalk. So that was a suggestion that we made, uh, in regards to the bike lane. I'll take any other, well, let me finish. I'll take any other, well, let me finish with the architectural portion. We wanted to blend in into the city. So when you pull in, it's not an eyesore, it's a very soft tones on, on the buildings architecturally. As you can, Colin can pull it down. So the lead team did a great job on making sure that we're architecturally pleasant to the eye when you're pulling into the community. We feel like this will boost our tenants wanting to live in our communities and provide an affordable quality product that's long lasting and will enhance the city in general and the neighborhood. So I'll take any questions.
So I just, hold on. Can you count? Is it on? There's a red light. Yeah. So can you, did you mention parking permits for apartments?
Correct. So our requirement of the, our property management company enforces strictly is for instance, if you have a two bedroom apartment, you only get two cars. You can get two parking spots. If you have a one bedroom apartment, you get one parking spot. Typically, there's a vacancy factor in apartments of this scale. It's 5% vacancy, if not more. So that's strictly enforced. So if somebody parks without a parking permit and the car is there for, you know, longer than 24 hours, it gets towed. So those are assigned spots. We do not charge for those spots to encourage people to park on site. That's one thing that we've learned that you do not charge for parking. People park in their spots. If you start charging for parking, it becomes an issue. I think that's what some other complexes are doing and that's why people are choosing to park on the streets. We try to prevent that and contain all the parking in our community. And we feel like 1.77% per unit is acceptable and over the standard that is other jurisdictions.
And did you say there's guest parking?
There is guest parking. Correct. Yeah, that's a ratio I'd have to look up, but there is guest parking for the project as well.
And you said you want to have all, you want to not depend on the outside for parking. You want to maintain all the parking for your residents within your property.
That is correct. Yeah.
But then you're talking about.
We're talking hypothetical.
Depending on Stacy Allison or what was that Stacy Allison for overflow sometimes?
Correct. We think it would be beneficial for the city to allow overflow parking for, let's say, you know, during holidays, there's more people that gather and it's a wide street. It's, it's done very nice. It's got the center lane. We're recommending to put an eight foot sidewalk in for more pedestrian traffic. We feel that will suffice to have, even if you had parking on one side, that traffic can go both ways without being impeded on. We do. We, all our complexes of this size have security onsite. It's a 24 hour security person that drives around to give our clients peace of mind and also it helps the community. So yes, we do.
Any idea of what rental fee?
Cost wise, this is just an approximate. For instance, a one bedroom apartment will probably run somewhere in the vicinity of between 950 to $1,000. A two bedroom apartment will go anywhere from 1,250 up to 1,400, depending on the amenities that apartment might have. Hey, I'm not sure if we got any three bedrooms. I gotta look at this one. But a three bedroom apartment will run somewhere in neighborhood of 1,600 and up, depending again on amount of bathrooms and amenities that it has with it. It does. Each apartment has its own balcony and terrace that come out. We also have storage in each apartment unit, bike parking in each unit. These will be what we call class A to B units. They're going to have finishes such as granite counters or stone counters, LVT flooring, high efficiency water amenities such as low flow faucets, all LED lighting throughout the entire project. So we're trying to create kind of a green, efficient project and still be fairly priced to where it kind of solves that housing problem that a lot of people are having trouble afford, be, afford a house that's, or a unit that is quality and price point.
Mr. Lebunsky, I got a question about the parking management plan requirements that the city says once a year, twice a year, you gotta go in, do account and all this sort of thing. It seems to me that if the city wants to do that, the city should go do it themselves. But before I get all excited about that, how do you feel about that? 10 year.
I had a conversation with Colin about that. I had the same reaction at first when I saw it and then.
I understand why the city would want that. That might satisfy a lot of these questions we're having.
Correct. In a perfect world, we, we would want the city to do it. However, Colin said it'd be a once a year thing where the person that, you know, is a maintenance person or whomever is in charge of the complex will drive on a golf cart and do account for the city and do a report. So we feel like that's a accommodation that we can accommodate and it'll be a good way to give back to the community data that they're looking for versus the city sending someone out that might not know the site as well. And so we felt like that was appropriate accommodation that we can accommodate.
Other questions for the applicant?
Well, I'm sorry, but what you were just speaking about, I don't know about that report. So what is being reported?
There is, in the conditions.
It's on the screen at the moment and it's in page 29 of the stock report. Just of it is the condition that the property manager has to collect some data. I think it's actually two periods in a year, how parking is actually used. And it's a very simple thing. So the metaphor I used, as Eugene explained, was they'll send someone out from the leasing office in a golf cart and do the property in like 20 minutes with the clipboard and like occupied, occupied, marking a site plan, empty, occupied. Okay, we're done. Let's get lunch. Oh, so to help us as city understand that there's a code requirement, but we actually want to see how a typical apartment complex, how the parking actually operates, how it gets used, like what are real world conditions? So when we evaluate future apartment complexes, we have some basis of comparison, some actual data to look to.
I, I would suppose at peak hours.
The condition to speak to that, um, it's twice a year and each time one is middle of the day.
It's more a city request. We can not do it if that's something that's not required, but we feel like it was very comforting for the city to, to do that for them.
I, I gotta tell you, on the, on the one hand, I think it's a great idea because we all have questions about parking in apartments. Two parking places per unit is a lot higher experience, which we do not have, so it's different. So if we were able to have that kind of information. But my thought on it, quite frankly, is that rather than do it at one 500 unit apartment, because it may be different than 100 unit, 50 or 25, get an intern once a summer. Have him go to work, driving around counting apartments or parking lots and do, and do it to all of them. And you could probably get it done for, like I say, you get an intern and interns, but I don't think it's very much. I think that's the whole point. It doesn't take a lot of means. It breaks count parking. But anyway, any other questions?
I'm going to jump in here really quick, Chair Piper. Just a reminder to add, address your questions into the microphone. And Commissioner Lassen, we seem to have some feedback coming in over from your microphone.
Okay. The next thing. Chris, maybe if you're not going to, when you're going to be speaking, turn your mic on the rest of the time, turn it off. Anyway. Testimony by proponents. Thank you. Is there anyone who wish to testify in favor of the, the project? Mr. Ripatine, you're not jumping in here, so I'm kind of thinking you must be waiting for the next testimony by opponents. Those are, are disagreeing. We'll go ahead and go with that.
Oh, well, I just, are we in the open to the public?
And please, well, that, that's where we're at now. This is testimony by proponents. I didn't hear anybody kind of jumping in and there's not very many people.
Well, I'm kind of neutral on it. I'm just glad to see him develop this property.
Hope, hope, we need your name and address, please, for our record.
Okay, I'm Steve Ripito. My wife is sitting here with me in the room. She doesn't want to be seen with somebody that looks like they just got off the train from Iowa. But anyway, we moved here from Iowa five years ago because we wanted to live at Paradise. That's where we are at, five, six, two Prairie Street. And so we would, our front entrance would look across through the two other houses into this apartment complex. So we're relatively close and over the five years I've observed that there's a growing need for better traffic flow through our neighborhood. In our circle here, we're fine, but the apartment complex to our north, that's been there for quite some time, has a need for more parking. And I'll compliment our HOA and the city. I don't know what they did, but we were getting a lot of people, maybe they still do, park in the entrance to our, north entrance to our Paradise Point. So something, I heard some questions from the floor about that, but I didn't quite get the, I would hope that there would be more backup parking other than on the streets because that's creating problems. Because we have a wonderful neighborhood, but it involves, some of them are fairly large extended families that come to visit and wow, when they have a celebration on a holiday weekend, it's packed house here. So that needs to be addressed. And the other thing that has been kind of ignored, I think, by the city is the truck traffic in Walmart. It has become a secondary truck stop. And while there is a sign right at the truck entrance, north truck entrance to Walmart, saying no trucks beyond that point, it doesn't, but it's got the circle with a line through it. And I drove a semi over the road and whenever I saw that sign, I better stop and turn around. But I don't see that happening. And that's the main feed to Allison Way. And so I don't know, you know, what the consideration there is. So maybe we need to look at doing some more traffic control there. And I do know after driving a semi over the road, there were truckers out there that didn't care about trees, shrubs, flowers. If it took, you know, a wide swing to get that truck in, they would do it. Run right over the trees, shrubs and everything, even boulders. And so, anyway, I, I just see it as potential problems to a good idea. We also wondered if there couldn't be maybe another possible grocery store plan for this area to supplement and give competition to Walmart. Walmart's doing a heck of a good business there. So that's a good thing. Other things I've thought about, and by the way, I have just a two year college degree, but my, all my business electives were in traffic management. And so I learned a lot about that. I got into traffic management driving a semi over the road, but anyway, I joke about it. I see great potential for extending that Evergreen corridor south and Allison Way south and potentially maybe in the distant future, having the highway department put in another interchange in the vicinity of Butteville Road, that overpass. And I know there, a year or so ago, there was plans made for another housing development over east of us. So that may be something that the city might want to consider. This may be off topic here, I'm sorry, but I'm just saying, and I did not hear, how many potential people are we looking at at this development? Is that a known figure?
Yeah, the first phase is 179 units. And the second phase, which is two years plus down the road, that would be 404 units. Is that correct?
I think 407.
407.
This is Colin, senior planner speaking. The average household size in Oregon is a little more than two people. It's a fraction. It's just funny enough. So if you multiply 586 by two, it'd be about 1,200 people per household. That's the best guess we have.
So that would be larger than the other proposal that was done last year east of us. And that's why I say it's already gotten to the point where the intersection at Evergreen and Newburgh Highway is really starting to, especially rush hour. So it's just something else we need to think about. And of course, we're retired, we're not in a big hurry to go to work or anything, but we just add to the traffic pattern that continues to flow through this extended neighborhood. But I'm glad to have this meeting and participate. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ripito. And I would encourage you to hang on here and listen to our deliberations because I have some responses to the various things that you said. So we'll get to that in a little bit.
Thank you. Stay on here.
Is there anybody else that wants to testify either in opposition or as a proponent of the development?
I just, I have a few questions. I also live, my name is Johanna, and I guess I live on 585 Prairie Street. I'm in the same development, Steve. Johanna Van Agans, 585 Prairie Street, Woodburn, Oregon, nine seven zero seven one.
Thank you.
We also, we have the same concerns about parking and traffic flow. We've been here for three years now and the increased flow from the apartment complex that's already there. You know, they're taking up a lot of our street parking to begin with. We've called and talked to our HOA about it and they said there's nothing we can do about it. So having a solution for parking is, is, you know, exciting and I hope something does take place for that. Also, we are a young family with young children who are about ready to attend school. And there's a lot of concern with, you know, we're, we are, I heard a lot of talk about, well, we need to house the growing population, but what are we doing about the growing population in our public school district? Because right now, our schools, the classroom sizes are way overpopulated and I don't see any enhancements to our public school districts. And trying to find a sufficient school for our two daughters, you know, it's like go to private school and put them in St. Luke's or put them in a classroom size of 30 plus children where they won't get the education that they need. So that concerns me, you know, there's new developments going in for housing. And if you're talking about 1,200 people, it's the inevitable that apartment living is very suited for young, young adults with young children who are going to be needing that education. So we're, we're concerned about how do we support this population growth in our public schools and in grocery stores and then the, the traffic and all of that. Like it's going to turn this cute little community into a big city. And, you know, it used to be a rural county and it's not that way anymore. And I feel like all we're doing is supporting people wanting to move to a cheaper part of Oregon because Portland, now Twallington, now Wilsonville, everything's getting expensive. And I'm just really concerned about, are we thinking about the bigger picture? Are we just thinking about the profit that we're going to make from a growing population of Oregon? Are we just thinking about the profit that we're going to make from a growing population of Oregon? So hopefully, my, my questions make sense and my concerns make sense. So I hope you guys have maybe a little insight into how you plan to handle the population growth and the schooling system and traffic and our services such as grocery stores, et cetera.
Thank you. I will comment just real quick on your question about the schools. The school, A, that's a question you'd have to address to the, to the school board and school district. B, the city, the Woodburn School District passed a bond now five or six years ago, $70 million to do upgrades and expansions. And they are about five years into that construction project, I think, and it's about an eight-to-ten-year total job for them to complete all those buildings, but additions to almost all the schools in town. So, but again, contact the school district about that. Is there anybody else with comments about the project, proponents or opponents? Hearing that, I will close the public hearing.
I apologize. The applicant has an opportunity to rebut or provide comment on the public testimony.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the neighbors' concerns and their comments. They are important to us as well. One thing I'd like to add, when you do projects of this size, there's an extraordinary fees that are paid. For instance, this project will give the city around close to $10 million in SEC's fees. Some of those fees goes to parks, school district, and other amenities for the public to kind of support the development. You know, stuff like connecting the trailhead, going to the parks, and other fees that get paid, for instance, for the interchange that was completed a while back. So we do our best to comply with all of the city codes and support the city and the growth that are happening in an organic way. And that's the best we can do. So that's kind of comment on that. In regards to the concern about traffic, we did have a lot of traffic studies done on this project by a very reputable company such as Lancaster Engineering. And we did the flow of the buildings per staff recommendation to make the traffic flow a lot better through the complex and make sure that people have an easy way to get in and out of the complex and also have sufficient parking. Like I mentioned before, most jurisdictions would ask for one parking spot per unit. Woodburn asked for two, that's their code, we understand that. But I think as a growing community, you know, we're, we provided 1.77 per unit ratio to accommodate that requirement and still make the project economically feasible. We also are improving Stacy Allison Way going all the way through. And I feel like this project will fit well into the neighborhood. And we, I feel like we've listened to all the concerns and met them to the best of our ability without compromising the, the buildings and also compromising the project to make it work economically. Thank you.
Okay, now, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, allow us to deliberate, and what say you?
Well, I'm excited.
Go ahead, Chris. Chris, we're not hearing you if you're speaking. We're still not hearing you. I'm not sure what's happening there. Dan, maybe you can work on that with Chris. Helen, have you got anything?
It's a, you know, it's a, it's a big project, but it appears that they've met all the criteria. I, I'm hoping this is going to look as good as it does on paper. And I will be voting for the project.
Sharon.
So I was going to say, I'm excited to see. I know that we're anxious to have this kind of helping with.
Commissioner Corning, can you please talk into the microphone for the folks on the video, please? Thank you.
Maybe, maybe push the button.
It's red. Is that?
Yeah.
I'm just saying that I'm happy that we have this kind of a project going in. Woodburn, I know that we've been concerned about getting affordable housing or middle housing. I am concerned about the parking and the architectural wall, the other things. I, you know, I don't see any problem with the other variants requests. But considering that two neighbors complained about parking on the street already being a problem, I think we should think twice before doing less than what's required.
Okay. I've got a number of things. The, the first thing I'm going to address is, are the traffic issues. There, traffic is bad out there. It's, it's, you know, on Evergreen and Stacy Allison and those intersections. Stacy Allison and Evergreen, Evergreen 214, Evergreen Hays. They're, they're bad now, running up against the, the total traffic counts that they can, they can deal with. The problem in a situation like this for a city like Woodburn to me is what comes first, the chicken or the egg? And in an ideal world, these, these things would all be built out, and then we would build in behind them, and the streets would be there to handle that. And that's not how it works here. And it's, it's just the way it is. We can want it differently, but that's the way it is. I also don't feel that it's, it's fair to dump a whole bunch of stuff, requirements for additions and, and, and fees excessively on to developers. I looked at the TSB, the Traffic System Plan that we just completed, and a number of these intersections are rated medium. I think one of them is rated high in terms of their priority. I would encourage, at this time, I'm speaking to the city and to the city council. These need to be rated, all of them, high, and they need to be on the top of their list of things that we address to solve this problem. It's, this complex is going to contribute to the problem greatly. Smith Crossing is going to do even more. But again, that's the way it is. I also feel the squeaky wheel gets the, gets the grease. So, Mr. Ripeto, you and your friends out there, I couldn't agree with more. Squeak, squeak to the city council. And hopefully, then we can all get these projects moved up and get them taken care of in the most timely manner that the city is able. The Evergreen Path onto Montebello, we discussed that a little bit. I, I just don't see that as something that, that these folks need to be paying for, so I'm in opposition to that. I have some questions about the Meridian Strip planted down Stacy Allison. The, one of my issues about that, Mr. Ripeto kind of brought it up, is at some point in time, Stacy Allison is going to be punched probably all the way through onto Parr Road to service that. And you're going to have more trucks going down that, not less. And it seems to me that that Meridian, median strip down that is going to become a hazard more than it's going to solve problems. Go ahead and jump in.
If I can jump in, if I may. Engineering recommends not having that median, and so
Exactly.
As a developer, I also see your concern, and we recommend not having that median. We had a conversation with staff, and they said that they would allow going with what engineering is recommending if the council votes that way. So is that correct?
The commission, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not surprised that, that you're not that wild about it. The other, the other thing about that does is it then does allow for the possibility of off-street parking through there. If you put that median in, and, and then the, the flow of traffic by cars that may be parked on the street. Because that, another, in a practical sense, I, I really like the way that you police your parking within your establishment. The fact that you have a permit basis, I like that. The fact that you have security there, I like that. But let's be honest, there's going to come times where it's going to overflow onto the street. And we, we build overfloor stormwater drainage areas into places because we know that at some point in time, there's going to be an overflow, there's going to be a heavy rainstorm, it's going to fill that up. We build for that possibility. This, to me, is kind of the same thing. There's going to be Christmases and Thanksgivings and whatnot that people come to visit, and they're going to line the streets and, and park in every spot. I hope that that is well planned for, and I think it is in this. If we did away with that median, though, it would allow the possibility of on-street parking.
Could I ask, could I ask one more question?
You bet.
This is Steve again. There's already, I'm thinking, because there's a sign there, the city must have an ordinance about big trucks driving on Stacy Allison to get in the yard. Would it just be that hard for the city to just simply enforce that?
Well, that would be a question for the police department. Good city council, but there's probably some there. Eric, did I see you dancing a little bit out there, wanting to say something?
Yes. Council chair, your commission chair, sorry, I'm speaking at the city council. I, I just wanted to make the, the public works, concerns regarding on-street parking in a commercial industrial area. It is a service collector street, which for the WDO, functional cross-sections does not allow for parking. If you look at how Progressway and Industrial Avenue were designed very, very wide, no parking, just for the very purpose because of truck movements. And I start to worry about parking on street, kids getting out, and then potential danger with the truck traffic coming through. So that, I just wanted to kind of voice my concern on that.
Very good point. So maybe that doesn't happen, but, but the median, I do think, is going to impact truck traffic along that, along Stacy Allison. And I'm still not in favor of, even if we don't have on-street parking, which I'm not in favor of either. That pretty much sums up my thoughts. We need to get some consensus going here on how we feel about this. This had such a long list of conditions. Let's try this. The, the chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the consolidated land reuse review packet termed Allison Way Apartments subject to the conditions as presented by staff with, since I want to do it this way, with the exceptions, removing the Evergreen Path onto Montebello, removing the median down Stacy Allison. Those would, I would entertain that motion at that way. Unless the balance of the commission wants to add anything else. As it stands right now, yes.
Can I ask you to clarify a point, Mr. Chair? So the way the staff's recommendation is, it recommends approval of five of the six variances, but it would deny the request to provide less than two parking spaces per unit. So if you wanted to modify that, you should address that in the motion.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay, yes. And I, and I would, I would say that modify the, that variance to the 1.77 suggested by the developer. I, I don't have any problem with the 1.77. So that's how I, that's how I'm terming this. Now, I'm just one guy and trying to get this ball rolling. Agreed. Well, the staff report. Commissioner, just a reminder to present your deliberations into the microphone for our audience. Thank you.
And for the rest of the commission, I can only hear the chair. Everybody else sounds like they're underwater.
This is Colin, I narrate. Chair Piper and Commissioner Corning are huddling over the conditions for a moment for location, I think. Another breaking up. Chair Piper, I think the developer wants to speak again.
I'm sorry?
If I may add one more thing. So just to the commissioners, you know, we took parking very seriously here. And the parking here is almost a double of what we do on other sites. For instance, in Salem, Camby, Twalton, Wilsonville Developments. And, you know, we, we almost met it, but not quite there. Without, with removing additional parking, this project essentially becomes not economically feasible. So I just want to mention that we're, this is about $100 million investment. The parking ratio, in our opinion, exceeds from all the studies we've done. We've tried to provide as much parking as possible to accommodate, so I just wanted to add that to the record. Thank you.
Colin, have you got a concise list of the conditions, maybe on a slide?
Uh, yes, there's at least one slide of that. I'll bring it up.
Commissioner Laffin, you had turned your microphone on a little bit ago. Did you want to chime in at all?
So there is this one slide, but it's definitely not exhaustive.
I was looking for your
I don't know, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, the, looks at the experiences?
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Chris, we can.
Just general comments, I, I agree really basically with what we said. What? I, I don't know. I don't know what's going on with this. I had no problem on Skype yesterday, and that was another, another one the day before. Mike's not working on this one.
We, we are hearing you. Okay.
We can hear you.
Okay, at this, at this point.
You can hear.
Yes, we can. We're hearing you. Are you hearing us? Anyway, at, at this point, it appears that the chair's proposed motion dies for lack of a second. So we're still looking for a motion of approval, subject to conditions.
I'll make that motion.
I'll turn off the mic and tell them to vote whatever, right?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion you just referred to.
Okay.
That we approve with conditions.
Have a second. For a second.
Well, I'm not sure what the motion is.
We'll get back to that. Is there a second? The, the motion is, uh, let me. Okay, we, we will discuss now and clarify as best we can so that everybody knows what we're talking about. It's, um, approving the project as presented, subject to the conditions as presented with the exception of the Evergreen Path into Montebello being removed, the median, um, down Allison Way being removed. And the parking ratio being changed from two, um, parking spots to 1.77 parking spots. Everything else is. My, my suggestion and the, and the motion that has been, um, moved and seconded is to, yes, go away from staff's recommendation. At this point, hearing no more discussion, I will call for a roll call vote.
I suppose I'll do that then. Um, Chair Piper?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Corning?
No.
Commissioner Berlin? Commissioner Lawson?
We're not getting anything out of Chris.
Uh, we couldn't hear Commissioner Lawson. Uh, you may want to use the chat to indicate yes or no. He indicates, yes.
Chris, Chris, write it on a piece of paper and hold it up. Yeah, do it. Yeah, come separate, uh, piece of paper that says yes or no, because we're not hearing you.
Uh, he entered yes into the chat.
Thank you, Dan.
Oh, thank you. One more. Vandal.
Thank you, Commissioner Vandal.
Yes.
The,
I believe it.
Pardon me?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you, I didn't know you were going to announce it. Go ahead.
Yeah, the, um, three or two in favor of the
Yeah.
Uh, motion. So the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Hmm. That was nice. Is there any other business from the commission?
Yes. I think that, I think that we just simply cannot have our meetings this way after tonight. It, it's too difficult to hear, too difficult to understand. And someone down the line, one way or the other, if we keep doing this, is going to challenge our decision. It's stating that it wasn't done by the way people actually wanted it, because you can't hear. I, I just think this is a really poor way to do this. I know we were stuck with it tonight, but there has to be a way that we can, if nothing else, if this, everything continues the way it is, we can socially distance in the council chambers. We can stay six or eight feet away from each other and vote and listen to this. But I want to hear what people have to say. I don't want it garbled on some kind of site like this.
Um, I, I think the whole commission would agree with that. I know I would, uh, and, uh, this has been a challenge and, uh, on behalf of Chris and Colin and myself and thank you everyone for your patience. Yeah. I know, I, I don't know. If, if we knew, we would have fixed it. Any other comments from the commission tonight? Updates from the staff?
Uh, the only update, first of all, certainly chef, staff shares your concern. This is certainly the last way that we want to hold these meetings. If there's other suggestions, I can assure you, every city in this state and in the country is trying to figure out a better way to hold these meetings. We're trying. Well, we'll do everything we can legally, uh, to hold these meetings. We'll, we'll keep looking at better ways to do it. Um, and I'm not, I don't want you to think that like staff is saying, no, this is the way you have to do it and nobody likes it. And we, we don't like it either, but we're kind of all trying to work through this together, um, as is the council and everybody else.
Is, is there anything on the horizon coming up in the next 30 days?
As a matter of fact, there is.
Oh.
And, and, and so that you're, I know a lot of you are aware, but maybe not, the, the public may not be aware. For the most part, City Hall is essentially shut down. Um, now there's certain committees and boards that simply have to meet. One is the city council. The budget committee has to meet at least once a year. And this planning commission has to meet once in a while to address land use items. They're the only boards that have to meet. And as far as I know, they're the only boards that are meeting. So this is really the only way that we see getting these things going. We're happy to look at other options. We want them to and to try to figure them out. These are the only groups that meet and we only meet because we're required to by law. And you all know sort of the timeframes that we have to go forward with to make sure development's moving along and we have requirements that we have to meet under the circumstances. Just a little heads up, we are truly as frustrated as you and it takes us an incredible amount of time and effort just to get this going and to try to make it as legal and fair as we can. As a matter of fact, there may be, I don't have a guarantee, but I'll know by tomorrow night, uh, another June 11th meeting with an item that's coming forward. Uh, I'll see, I don't know for certain, they're about this close to be, uh, to getting all the information that they need before they have to, they're, we're required to hold a public hearing for them. We don't have the choice of saying you're going to have to wait. And that hearing has, as you know, has a lot of rules and requirements we have to meet, uh, to make sure that it's open and public and transparent. The only, I, the other item I was going to mention was, uh, um, you may be familiar with, uh, may recall that woodland crossing apartments. This apartment complex behind the, uh, the mall that happened, it's 300 units. It was probably exactly three years ago or two and a half years ago, it was initially approved. They came in and requested an extension to their application, uh, that went, it's requires a type two review by staff. Um, it's approved to allow them more time to finish construction to get moving on it. Uh, their plans are under review by the engineering department right now. So they've been given, just letting, just give you an update, they've been given a two-year extension to continue working on that project. You have a certain amount of time when you have to complete work and.
I've wondered what, what's going on there.
It's been slow going. I, I can't speak to all the different reasons they have them, but, um, right now they have engineering drawings. Basically they're, uh, public works drawings, under review, staff's reviewing them for, ideally for them to get moving after those get done. Then they start doing their public improvements. Just a heads up on where that project was at. It was a pretty big project at the time. Um, and I believe that's all I had. Again, I appreciate all your patience. I know it's, it's a real struggle for the public as well. Everyone who's hanging in there, I really appreciate it.
Um, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you all. We are adjourned.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time for, time. Steve, thank you.